Usually you're a hat wearer, too.
Stacy, we're good to go.
Okay, okay, well, let's call this meeting to order at I have eight oh four. And if we could start with our roll call, please.
Ignacio Allegre. Brent Beasley.
Here.
Thank you. David Elliott.
Here.
Simon Gonzalez.
Here.
Jack Healy.
Here.
Margie Nieder.
Here.
Patrick Corthes. Maria Rosa Lopez.
Here.
Enrique Perez.
Here.
Robert Ruiz. Stacy Sanchez.
Here.
Christine Snapper.
Here.
Robert Tucker.
Here.
Bridget Carnaba. Cabana, sorry. John, thank you. Johanna Rivera. Johanna, are you here?
Yes, she is on mute.
Okay, thank you. Daisy Campo.
Here.
Pierre Lubert, I know he's here. Yeah, there you go. And Dennis Barnum.
Present.
Thank you. We're have a quorum, so we can get started.
Excellent. Well, let's start with our pledge of allegiance. You know, we all need to stand to do that. And if you don't have a flag in your room, you can look at Mark's picture. We have a flag there. And when you're ready. Ready? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Who would like to sing?
I say that was a little bit better than doing happy birthday with people. I don't know if you've done some of that and everybody's off. Finishing at different times. Okay. Um, do we have any public comments? I think so. Everybody's.
Uh, we do not.
All right, well, let's move on to our consent calendar items. We have three looking for a motion to approve.
No move.
Second.
Thank you.
Great. All right. So we just have the one item on the business calendar. And this is our eligible training provider list, policy and procedure. Basically, we need to adopt a policy on this um to meet state and federal guidance. And if need, you know, there's a list in your packet. And basically, if we need to, we can add eligible training providers to this list as we go forward. Right now, we contract with South Bay and they manage our list and confirm all of our providers. As we add them or the ones that are on the list have been confirmed by South Bay. Sandy, anything you want to add?
No, I think you covered it pretty well. We are mandated by the state to have a policy. So this is our draft version. I know that the state is coming down with a new updated policy, which is in draft form. They have already made the various changes, but they haven't made it official. So once they have made their changes official, we will make our policy final. With regards to their changes, it was based on their draft version that they had put out for comment. So that's why you see it the way it is. But otherwise, it's standard based on the requirements that the state mandates of us.
Okay.
And just to confirm, it's not a complete list. I mean, we can add to it. Sorry, go ahead, Brett.
Correct.
No, just moving around, move to adopt and approve the list.
Thank you.
I'll second it. Or Bob second it, that's fine.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Okay, our motion passes. That's the end of our business calendar. And we have a couple of presentations today. Let's see, we have Maritza Gamboa with the Orange County is going to give us an Orange County labor market overview. And I think Maritza, you were replaced Anne Marshall, huh?
Yeah, good morning.
Good morning.
Anne Marshall retired like maybe five years ago or more, so she's been gone for a while now.
She was replaced quite some time ago. I have this note on there and I'm thinking, I wonder why I had that down, but irrelevant. All right, well, please, we look forward to your presentation.
Well, good morning, everyone. Let me go ahead and show my screen real quick. Okay, so let me know if you cannot see my screen or you're having trouble hearing me. Look, good morning and thank you for inviting me to your meeting. My name is Maritza Gamboa and I am with Employment Development Department's Labor Market Information Division. So this morning, I'll share with you labor force and industry employment numbers in addition to other information for Orange County and for the city of Santa Ana. So let's start off with labor force for Santa Ana. So this is a chart as of January of 2020 last year. So the blue bars are the employment levels, the yellow bars, the unemployment levels, and the dotted blue line are the unemployment rates for Santa Ana. So with the changes of restrictions, you know, with this pandemic, it's expected that the labor force would fluctuate as well. So when there are restrictions in place, employment levels decrease, unemployment increases, and the unemployment rate increases. So and as the restrictions are lifted and the economy starts to heal, the numbers start going the other direction. Employment increases, unemployment decreases, and the unemployment rate declines. Okay, here we have the unemployment rates for the county and for the three local workforce development areas. As you might already know, May of last year is when the county and the three workforce development areas had the highest unemployment rates ever recorded. The county as a whole reached fourteen point nine percent. The Orange County Workforce Development Area had a rate of fourteen point five percent. The Anaheim Workforce Development Area had a seventeen point four percent. And the Santa Ana Workforce Development Area reached fifteen point one percent, which is twelve percent higher than the pre-pandemic rate of two point eight in February. So it wasn't until September and October of last year, when the county and the three local workforce development areas rates fell below ten percent. As of July of this year, the most recent data available, all the rates are eight to ten percent lower than last May, but still about three to four percent higher than they were prior to the pandemic in February. For the tenth consecutive month, the unemployment rate for Santa Ana has been less than ten percent, reaching six point four in July, which is three and a half higher than it was in February of last year, prior to the onset of pandemic, but it is eight percent, eight and a half percent lower than the peak in May. Now taking a look of at how the county's labor force has performed since February of last year. Employment grew by one hundred and eighty one thousand four hundred people from April twenty twenty through July twenty twenty one, offsetting nearly sixty eight percent of the two hundred and sixty six thousand three hundred loss that occurred during the beginning of the pandemic from February twenty twenty through April twenty twenty. So in July twenty twenty one, there were eighty four thousand nine hundred fewer employed in the county than there were before the pandemic broke out in February of last year. The number of unemployed in the county fell by a hundred and twenty thousand one hundred from April twenty twenty through July of this year, offsetting nearly sixty nine percent of the one hundred and seventy four thousand seven hundred unemployment increase that occurred from February through April of last year. There were more, there were fifty four thousand six hundred more unemployed people in July of twenty twenty one than there were before the pandemic broke out in February of last year. So Orange County added one hundred and sixty five thousand two hundred jobs from its pandemic low in April twenty twenty through July twenty twenty one, reaching one million five hundred seventy seven thousand eight hundred jobs, which was an increase of eleven point seven percent. Despite the job growth over the recovery period, the county's total non-farm employment remains a hundred and five thousand seven hundred jobs below its pre-pandemic level of February of last year. As of July of this year, the county has recovered sixty one percent of the two hundred and seventy thousand nine hundred jobs it lost in the months of March and April combined. For the most recent data month available, in July, total non-farm employment reached one million five hundred seventy seven thousand eight hundred jobs. The industries are ranked in order of having the most jobs. The three largest industries account for half of all the jobs in the county, with professional and business services being the largest industry sector with three hundred and nineteen four hundred jobs, I mean, three hundred and nineteen thousand four hundred jobs. The second largest industry is trade, transportation, and utilities with two hundred and fifty two thousand five hundred jobs. And the third largest industry is educational and health services with two hundred and twenty three thousand eight hundred jobs. Between June and July, the county declined by four thousand seven hundred jobs, which is usually the case between these two months. Four industry sectors declined over the month, with government losing the most, declining by thirteen thousand three hundred jobs due to the seasonal closures and local educational entities. Industries did add jobs over the month, with leisure and hospitality adding the most, increasing by five thousand eight hundred jobs between June and July. Sixty two percent of that increase was in arts, entertainment, and recreation, which added three thousand six hundred. Year over, nine of the eleven major industry sectors expanded between July of twenty twenty and July of twenty twenty one. Total non-farm employment increased by eight percent, adding a hundred and sixteen thousand four hundred jobs over the year, and is the fourth consecutive year-over-year employment increase. Leisure and hospitality accounted for a little over half of the total increase, adding sixty two thousand three hundred jobs. And within that sector, arts, entertainment, and recreation gained thirty five thousand three hundred jobs. And accommodation and food services added twenty seven thousand jobs over the year. Government was the only sector to report a year-over-decline, losing two hundred jobs. The county still remains below the February twenty twenty pre-pandemic non-farm employment level of one million six hundred eighty three thousand four hundred jobs. As of last month, the county has a total of one million five hundred seventy seven thousand eight hundred jobs and has recovered about sixty one percent of the total employment loss. So looking at the major industry sectors, all are recovering except government, which continues to shed jobs. Trade, transportation, and utilities has recovered the most, about eighty eight percent, with retail trade covering up, recovering about seventy eight percent. Professional and business services has recovered about three quarters of the jobs. And leisure and hospitality has recovered about seventy two percent of the job loss. Here's a detailed slide of the recovery with a look at not only the major industry sectors, but also the subsectors. So the ones in black and are bolded are the eleven industry sectors, and in italics are the subsectors. Those in red font are industries that have not recovered at all and instead have continued to lose jobs since the pandemic. So as seen in the previous slide, government has continued to shed jobs at the federal, state, and local government subsector levels. Finding and logging has also been declining, and there are some subsectors that have declined even though the sector level has actually recovered the jobs. So this can be seen in the educational and health services industry sector, where it has recovered approximately half of the jobs lost during the pandemic. But at the subsector level, educational services has continued to shed jobs since the pandemic. In contrast, there are some subsectors that have fully recovered and actually added jobs since pandemic. But at the sectorial level, it still has not fully reached its pre-pandemic, its pre-pandemic employment figure. So for example, construction has recuperated sixty four percent of the jobs lost. But construction of buildings and heavy and civil engineering construction have not only fully recovered all the jobs, but also added employment since the pandemic. One of the newest tools available that the Labor Market Information Division has is the online job vacancy statistics dashboard, which provides timely monthly measures of labor demand at the national, regional, state, and metropolitan area levels. The user's burning glass labor insights help wanted online data series, also known as H-Wall, to gather the data. So the H-Wall dashboard is on our website and it provides the top ten occupations with the most job ads, top ten cities with the most job ads, top ten industries, and top ten employers with the most job ads. The dashboard gets updated every month on the same day we release labor force and industry employment data. So tomorrow, this dashboard will be updated to reflect August numbers. The information on the dashboard is for the county, and here you see the top ten occupation and cities with the most job ads and the month over change. And here are the top ten industries and employers in Orange County with the most job ads and their month over change. Again, dashboard is only at the county level, so if you're looking for data at the sub-county level, just let me know and I'll be able to pull up data at the city level. So here, I pulled up data for Santa Ana. So this part displays monthly job advertisements for the city. Between March and April twenty twenty, when the shutdown occurred, the city declined by one thousand three hundred thirty seven ads, reaching a low one thousand six hundred twelve ads in April. From January twenty twenty to July of this year, May twenty twenty one had the highest number, reaching three thousand fifty seven ads, surpassing the pre-pandemic numbers of January, February, and March of last year. As of July, the city had two thousand seven hundred forty four ads, which is a seventy percent increase from April of last year. And here are Santa Ana's top five employers with the most ads. The top employer is First American, which is a financial services company. Then you have Allied Universal, which provides security assistance and services. In third place is Santa Ana USD, and then you have Orange County Global Medical Center. And fifth is Fuji Film Scientific, which actually manufactures cell cultures and medical devices to the healthcare industry. Also seen here are the top five industries with the most job advertisements, with healthcare and social assistance having the most ads. And the top five occupations. Some of the top skills and demand are customer service, scheduling, sales, repair, and cleaning, which includes the process of removing unwashed substances such as dirt, infectious agents, and other impurities. So that was an overview of what has been happening in OC and Santa Ana. Thank you for your time and please contact me should you have questions or need assistance in accessing data on our website. Tomorrow, Friday, we will be releasing labor force, industry employment, and job advertising data for the month of August. And the information will be updated on our website around mid-morning. You could also contact me and I'll send you the information directly as well. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Maritza.
Thank you, Maritza. Yeah, appreciate that. Quite a bit of dramatic information there. A lot of changes happening in the last year.
Could we, could we have this presentation sent to us so we have that information or not?
I already sent it to Deborah, so I believe she will include it in your packet, so email it to you separately. If for some reason you don't receive it, you feel free to email me directly and I'll send you the information.
Yeah, it's my understanding Deborah will send this all out to everybody. Sure.
That'd be great. Maritza, are you available down the road to come and do this type of presentation for a large group?
Um, yeah, contact me and then we could figure out the details and what it is that, you know.
Mark, I'm thinking of the Grow Conference.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Has there been any discussions in EDD or with your data regarding the effect of artificial intelligence and technology on workforce? I mean, for labor, that's a big deal regarding particularly the displacement of workers. And that's, I know the European Union just passed a sweeping kind of a bill of rights on how to deal with artificial intelligence. If those conversations occur.
Um, as far as I know, the data that we collect does reflect the replacement of workers by artificial intelligence, but we don't see a huge impact specifically in the, at the county level. But on a monthly basis, we do, you know, we do track and we do survey employers in terms of the number of people who are employed. So that might provide a glimpse of what's currently happening, but more specifically than that, no, there is no other like specified research or anything in regards to that.
Thank you. It's a big deal.
What this is, this is Simon. Maritza, thank you for the presentation. Very interesting. I have a couple of questions. What is, what is affecting the higher unemployment after the pandemic? And the second one is what time of worker are we talking about? Because in my, in our case, we have the factory had not stopped any day during the pandemic and after the pandemic, but we don't get people. And that's, that's another issue. We have been, they say, missing sales and business opportunity because we don't have workforce, people don't want to work because those, all this stimulus from the government. So we are paying that the stimulus ends, so we can have people who need to work to come back. And this, this unemployment is based on companies who have been closing because of the pandemic or because people don't want to go to work.
So if, if you're talking about the labor force and the unemployment rate, these are people who live in the county and are not working, but it does not include the jobs within the county. So if you're talking about the unemployment rate, it counts the people who live in the county but may be working somewhere else. And you're right in terms of folks who received unemployment insurance. A lot of them said and believe that they were making more money off unemployment insurance than actually going to work. So we're hoping, we're hoping now that, you know, the, the special payments and the stimulus have ended, people will be quote unquote forced to look for employment. And a lot of the things too that has happened is that a lot of folks who either got laid off or, you know, got fired from their jobs, actually looked at themselves and said, hey, you know what? This might be an opportunity to go back to school or get retrained in a different field. So that's also, we've seen that as well, too, where folks are not even going back to the same job they were at, but they're looking at getting training or going to, you know, school to get retrained in some other field. But at the moment, you know, we're hoping that with the, the stop payment of these additional stimulus payments for UI that folks will get pushed into the labor market once again. So we're hoping to see that in the next coming months.
Thank you, Maritza.
No problem.
You, you know, I, I would, I would also caution as well that when we do, when, with the stopping of some of the the, the state and federal benefits for unemployment insurance, you know, employers may want to also consider that it, it's not always the money that keeps people from their, from jet, from a job. And those are some of the things in workforce. I know in some of the centers that, that we've encountered with folks looking for work, there's, there's ten reasons why, and one of them is the money. And so that's something many employers should take heed to as well. And not just consider because people are not getting benefits. That means that they're going to accept any type of job. I think re-careering has been something that's been going on in the one-stop centers for, during the pandemic as well. Like Maritza said, people do decide, hey, you know what? I was working in aerospace, but you know what? Hospitality looks really good. I'd like to see how I can get in there. So those are some of the things to probably.
Also, Maritza, on your when you made your comments about people going back to school, when I was at the university, when there was downturns like this, this is when we saw spikes in enrollment. In the adult population, coming back, whether to get certifications or even degree programs.
Yeah, and, and right now, there's a lot of additional expectations with going back to work in terms of, you know, safety and and individual health and all these precautions for, you know, COVID and things like that. So there's additional things that a lot of job seekers are looking for in terms of going back in person to employment, so.
Well, and just anecdotally, I'm seeing, I'm getting more calls from people who've lost jobs and are moving into self-employment as well, so similar changes that we see there. Um, okay, any, thank you again, Maritza. We really appreciate it. Presentation, we'll assume that presentation will get sent out to everybody. Um, we have another presentation today, an update on our regional efforts. Annette Whittle is here today to discuss that. You know, as you know, the three workforce directors work with Annette for our regional plan and we're rolling, you know, she's, we're rolling as we roll that out in the different sector plans in our Sacramento activities. So Annette's here today to give us an update. Thank you for coming.
Morning, everyone. Thank you for having me. I think the last time I was here was maybe back in April or so. At that time, we were working on our regional and local plan, which has since been submitted. And the final signatures were submitted in June, and we just got approval in August by the state that they've accepted our regional and combined local, local plan. So in, I am going to definitely be responsible for making sure the things that we wrote in there are being implemented and that we're moving some of those strategies forward to, as a region. One of those things under that is really strengthening our industry sector partnerships. So since then, we have held four industry sector strategy meetings with individuals from education, the workforce development boards, and a few the chambers and a few nonprofits that are also in workforce development area. And those meetings were basically centered around really trying to develop a framework that we could all agree on in how we were going to engage industry sector partnerships. Really trying to come together as a region. We all, from education, our community colleges, our K through twelve, workforce development, all kind of have a need from businesses to inform how we run our programs, what their needs are in training, how we can strengthen our educational programs to specifically give them what they need in an employee. So we want to be able to go to employers collectively to engage them so that we're not stressing them out and all pulling on their time. A lot of times, there's a select few employers that are always willing to participate. And so we don't want to tax any one particular employer, but if we can come collectively and kind of ensure that one, all of our systems are informed and also be able to provide value back to those businesses. So really looking at the three boards, strengthening the business services end of things and being able to also offer them services that they can take advantage of, that are timely, kind of meet the speed of private businesses, if I could say, you know, when it comes to our on-the-job training programs and those sort of things, it becomes really important if we want them to take advantage of those programs. So we are working with the three boards to kind of just. So we are working with the three boards to kind of just make sure, one, we are all somewhat aligned. The act says, you know, we can do on-the-job training programs, but it doesn't specifically. There's a wide range of, you can do three months, you can do six months, you can potentially do up to ninety percent reimbursement if you apply for waivers. So wanting to be somewhat similar amongst the three boards so that, um, one, businesses aren't shopping the boards and also so that when we are presenting to them, that we sound like a cohesive system that doesn't really confuse businesses about the offerings that are under the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act. In addition to that, we've since, um, submitted the Department of Labor Career Grant, um, as a region, one component in that is to um, we pitched basically starting a regional one-stop center that would be an online center that supports the region. Um, with, um, comprehensive services to individuals that is, would be purely online. So we're hoping that we get funding to do something like that in this area. Um, it's one of the things that was talked about, uh, often at the national, um, conferences, so hopefully we can maybe get some offering there that allows people to just take advantage of, of services, people that maybe don't have, um, as much access. And then the other thing, I'm gonna share my screen, I'm gonna just go over, there's lots of funding that's coming down for workforce, um, development programs. Whether that be in, um, through the California Workforce Development Board, we've got E T P funding, the community colleges are receiving funding. So lots of opportunities for us to do some things in the area. However, I think, um, as the three boards talk, we, we definitely need to be positioned. Strengthen our industry sector partnerships and be able to kind of have programs on the shelf, ready to go, so that when these opportunities come out, that we are in place to apply for them and to bring some of this funding into the area. These are, this is kind of a draft and just the target release dates are in draft still, so nothing set in stone. But, um, the High Road Training Partnership, which is real discretionary funding, there's about ten point five million. They're only going, only going to fund existing or previously funded, um, High Road Training Partnership grants, so, um, none of the three boards have any of these programs currently, so, um, that's not going to be an opportunity we'll be able to apply for, but that is funding that's out there. And then there's the Workforce Accelerator Fund, which is also discretionary funding. Um, this funding is for innovation, innovative solutions to equitable economic recovery for target populations. It's one of those programs that kind of allow you to, to test something out. It, you don't necessarily have to come with those evidence-based practices, but if you have a good idea that you think may work and you want to kind of pilot it, it, this is the grant for that. It's open to all organizations except for profit, um, and it's ten point five million in that pot of money. The, um, regional funding California, in the past years, we've been funded under what they call the slink, slingshot program, um, grant program. And they basically put general fund dollars to support regional equity and recovery and partnerships with the California Community Colleges. So they will be funding it a little bit, the regional work a little bit differently. It's going to be twenty-five million going into that. Um, it's only open, open to the regional planning units. There's fifteen regional planning units throughout California. And more than likely, um, all, all fifteen will get some type of funding for this, although, um, we all do have to apply. Um, what's different in this is that there is that kind of mandatory partnership with, um, the California Community Colleges with the the planning units being the lead, um, in submitting the actual grant itself. So we'll be working closely, um, with our community colleges. We, uh, have been meeting with, um, the L A O C, the Los Angeles Orange County Regional Consortium. Um, Alex Davis, who is running that, so they are going to be separating, um, instead of it being the L A, Los Angeles, Orange County. Orange County will be its own region at the community college level. So I think that's going to be a good move for, um, Orange County area because, um, now Alex can focus her attention just in the Orange County regions as opposed to being split amongst, um, I don't know, twenty-nine community colleges, I think it is, across the two, uh, the two counties. So, um, I think it's going to be a good move. We just met with her yesterday, so we're really gearing up to try to, um, look at how we need to move forward together, look at both of our, um, regional plans to kind of do a crosswalk of, um, what are, what are we both, a lot of, we're, we're tasked to do the same things in a lot of different areas. So we really need to work closely with them so that we can leverage each other's efforts, not duplicate efforts and kind of, um, I think there's more than enough territory in the county to cover as far as reaching out to employers. And so we're not, we're doing that str- more strategically going forward. The High Road Training Partnership Grant here, this one is a hundred million. And this one is open for new High Road Training Partnerships, so, um, this is where we could get in, um. I'm not going to get into, if you go into the California's Workforce Development website, there's, uh, information on High Road Training Partnerships that really talk about what a High Road Training Partnership looks like. And a lot of it has to do with wages and equity, you know, they're just looking for really good jobs, what they would consider good jobs. But there's a lot of information on their site if you want to take a look at that. Um, the Prison to Employment Grant is coming back out, so another twenty million, only open to those who have had it in the past, which Santa Ana has, um, the Prison to Employment Program currently, so we can, um, go after more money in that area. And then the A B eleven eleven, um, that one is also coming out. It's to serve targeted populations currently. The county of Orange has an A B eleven eleven that's, um, in partnership with Goodwill Industries that is targeting, um, individuals with disabilities. So this one is also open to us. And then we have the High Road Construction Careers. It's basically similar to High Roads Training Partnership Grants. It's just focused on construction. You could see lots of money. They've cobbled together money from, um, general fund and S B one and different, uh, funding sources to make up this pot of money. And, um, uh, this one, um, you have an initial submission, a letter of intent, and then you would be invited to apply for this one. There's also the Local Training for Certified Nursing Assistance. It's general fund dollars to support workforce training programs for C N As through the local workforce development boards, fourteen point five millions. It's in partnership with the adult ed, um, ombudsman employers. This program is not totally, um, defined out. They, they're really not sure exactly how they're going to roll this out. Their biggest concern is, yes, they want to, um, be able to train people in this area, but also this, a concern of um, these positions being lower wage, late wage positions. So they're really trying to figure out how, you know, it makes sure that it's, um, individuals can enter as C N As, but there is a pathway for them to, um, scale up and earn more money, um, on a career pathway. So that's everything with California Workforce Development Board funding. If you haven't heard, you've got E D A grants that are coming out, um. Let, let me back up. So there's employment and training cow money that's coming out, it's ninety-two million. I believe today there is, um, going to be a webinar regarding that funding on that. The program is not, the funding is not going into the existing program as it stands. So there are some different requirements, um, in this program. So, uh, I think initially people thought that they were just going to add more money to the existing E T P pun, funding, but they did make changes to that. And then so on the E D A grants, there's three billion dollars that's, um, it's the American Rescue, um, Plan Funding. So there's a, a billion dollars in the Build Back Better Regional Challenge. This, this grant basically will fund, um, regional efforts. There should be one regional grant, um, ideally coming from local areas. A region can span more than one county. Um, it doesn't necessarily have to just be an orange, orange county being the region. This is a grant that they basically say, um, if you have any type of, um, if you can dream it, if you want to ask for it in this particular grant, um, uh, they're really focused on strengthening, um, industry clusters and/or bringing in new clusters into the local area. So, um, if you have any thoughts on, uh, maybe new industries coming into your area, this is the grant for that. We have been looking at this, um, as a region, so, um, exploring, there's lots of individuals that are, you know, contacting the county on, um, trying to find out, you know, what we are planning to do, um, as a region. So still looking at that, um, and then there's the good, um, good jobs challenge. Um, it's five hundred million, and so this one is to, it's really to support, um, industry sector partnerships, and they have three phases on this. It's system development, program design, and program implementation. So you can apply at any level, depending on where you think you kind of fall in this. The, from talking to, um, Will Marshall at, um, our regional E D A office, this one is undersubscribed, so there's not, um, as many people, um, going after these fundings. So this may be a good opportunity for us to bring those funds into the area. And then there's the Economic Adjustment Assistance Challenge, which, um, is five hundred million. I'm not gonna get in a whole lot, but this is pretty traditional funding for them. Um, he does say that this program is already oversubscribed, so I really don't think we're gonna even really explore that one. Um, and then there is the travel and tourism and outdoor recreation grants that kind of, um, and typically E D A does not do anything in this travel and tourism space, and even in their regular, um, grants that they normally provide. They do, they don't touch travel and tourism. So, um, this one is unique to this particular, uh, funding. And there's a state tourism grants that the states can apply for. And then there are the competitive grants for individual communities, um, that have been hit by, uh, challenges facing the travel and tourism. So that one is available. And then there's other statewide, uh, research and network grants. So, and then the other funding, um, there's a, there's, this is just, uh, there's a hundred and nine million direct funding on the state level, which I kind of shared with the, the directors and I won't get into a whole lot of that, but, um, these are the organizations that have, are going to receive just some direct funding, uh, money. And that is it on the funding. If you guys have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
So I have a question on the, um, one towards the end there, and Mark, you might jump in if you have a thought on this too. On the tourism travel, we have a new, uh, T M D that was established in January here in Santa Ana called Travel Santa Ana. It's funded through assessment of our seventeen of our hotels. Would, it's, it's a new entity, would that have a, be able to qualify for anything at that level? Or is it more based on, on, uh, uh, T M Ds or tourism bureaus that are more established?
Um, it doesn't, so are they, they're a nonprofit or what?
Uh, they're a five oh one C six.
I'd need, I would have to look at that, um, for, sure, five oh one C threes would be eligible.
Well, most T M Ds, you know, like your Destination Irvine or your Travel Coast to Mesa, you know, uh, Anaheim, they all have districts that support tourism through, uh, assessments of, uh, hotel stays. Like ours at Santa Ana is a two percent. So every of our seventeen hotels that are part of the district, uh, when they have a person that spends the night, two percent of their lodging, uh, fee uh, goes to Travel Santa Ana. Wait, but it's a new program. We just hired the first president last month.
Okay.
For that, you know, Mark, you have anything to add? Cause Mark and I sit on that board.
You know, I sent that information to Wendy.
Wendy, okay.
Yeah, so I thought if the city could be the lead, maybe the Travel Santa Ana could be a co-partner. So we're, we're looking into that.
Okay, good. I didn't know that. So I saw that and of course I kind of perked my ears when I saw tourism, since we're involved with that.
I'm, I'm scanning R F P just really quickly here. Um, I would say that that is a good strategy, you know, for the city to take the lead and then, and, and I would probably say just because it's a new organization, regardless, even if they were eligible to apply, that may be a better strategy just because, um, typically, you know, these grants are cost reimbursement. So if it doesn't have the, if it doesn't have capital established already, if it does, then maybe, you know, it works, but, um.
Well, I think just to get on the radar, start with, with.
Yeah.
Would be, you know, so Mark, you're on top of that. That's good.
And, and there is. I'm sorry, if you do go to the E D A's website, I was gonna post in a chat, but I don't see that available. There is, um, you can access the NOFO and there is a webinar that you can watch that does discuss it, so it could answer some more questions. But they've done a really good job in doing, um, a webinar overview and a technical assistance webinar on their site.
Annette, is there any way to get a copy, sorry, Annette, is there any way to get a copy of what you presented so that we have that for reference?
Yes, I will send that out to, um, Deborah and she can get that out to the group.
Thank you.
Annette, if you want, you can, um, also include me on the email and I can forward to everyone. And also the other presentation from Maritza, go ahead and send it in today. I, uh, she sent that to me yesterday.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Annette. Lot of money coming down the pipe there. Um, at what point will we know if the regional group or, uh, and that is applying for the specific grants? I mean, when will that be decided, you know?
Um, so, uh, let, let me, uh, uh, the unfortunate thing about grants is, you know, once people, people are eligible, right? So we don't always know who's going after, but, um, I think a lot of people have reached out to the county of Orange Workforce Development and have said, okay, are you doing this? And so unless you know, you know, who's saying what. Also, they are, it, these E D A grants need to be aligned with the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, um, which is held by, you know, was developed by the county of Orange. And so they should be contacting the county of Orange and letting them know that, hey, this is what they want to do. So they kind of have, I know that they have been contacted, not only by individuals within Orange County, but also L A County who want to cover both counties, right? So I think that they are trying to evaluate how they would like to move forward or how to, you know, pull people together. These E D A grants, one of them's due January, we've got a few, one of them's due in March. So they've given quite a bit of time to, to get, get our house in order, I guess, you know, and try to figure out, um, the best way to tackle it. I'm, I'm hopeful that most people will contact the county of Orange because they are the holder of that sets. And they really should be getting, um, the support from the county. And at that point, then they can say, okay, well, this is how we're going to do this. I mean, we're talking max on one of them is twenty-five million. So, you know, there's, it's, it's a huge lot of, huge amount of money. You've got infrastructure and non-infrastructure that can be a part of it. I would say for cities who have particular, because you can have multiple projects within the one, let's say twenty-five million dollars. It's not necessarily one project. So you can have multiple projects, they kind, things need to align, you know, they need to align with the sets and they're aligned overall with, you know, what the count, where the county is going. And so as cities, I would say if you have specific projects, I would reach out to Karma, um, at the county of Orange and say, okay, you know, we're interested in it. We'd like our project included. And then that way, uh, you know, as they develop, you know, a strategy is being developed and kind of move forward. But keep you updated through Deborah.
Great, thank you. We'll be watching for updates.
All right.
Uh, any other comments from anybody on Annette's presentation? Um, Bianca will send that all out to all, we'll send that out to everybody, so we should have a copy of it. Okay, so it looks like it's the end of our presentations. Um, we're gonna move on to committee reports. Did the youth council meet?
Uh, not yet, not yet. Uh, we're planning our next meeting on October fourteenth. And we're continuing to work with, uh, Project Kinship and, uh, Orange County Conservation Corps and the Santa Ana Therapeutic Arts Center. So we'll have more information in the near future. And the Santa Ana Therapeutic Arts Center, so we'll have more information in the near future.
Excellent, thank you.
Sandy, anything else?
No, I think you're right, we're, we're gonna try and meet this upcoming October in person, hopefully, I know it's been a long time since we've met in person. So looking forward to that, trying to work out the details so that we can all get together and get our business done in person.
Well, Daisy, I mean, Sandy, stay on, off mute there, we're moving into staff member comments, I think you have an update for us.
Um, I believe Araceli is gonna be presenting on the work center and a couple of items like the day employment program. And the youth, excuse me, the job fairs that were happening, so I'll hand it over to Araceli to take over.
Thank you, Sandy, good morning, everyone, my name's Araceli Delgado with the Santa Ana Work Center. Carlos de la Riva wanted to give you two updates, the first update, like Sandy mentioned, was the summer job fair. This was an outdoor event that took place on August nineteenth at the Santa Ana Main Library. This was a successful event and this was in partnership with the Employment Development, Development Department, who are wonderful partners. The Santa Ana Public Library and the Santa Ana Work Center. The Summer Job Fair provided employment support and resources to job seekers in our Santa Ana community. Which is much needed in, in these current times, over two hundred job seekers were in attendance. And they did have the opportunity to talk to the employers in person, which is great. They also received resume review assistance and additional resources mainly regarding the Santa Ana Library. The Work Center Services and also E D D. We did have twenty five employers who participated, which was a really good turnout. Some of these businesses include Police Pies, Pep Boys, Santa Ana Police Department, E D D and Amazon. The second update is the Sanon Work Center launched the Santa Ana Youth Employment Program this summer. As you are all aware of this, we are still recruiting youth between the ages of sixteen to twenty one. The same employment program targets low income youth in Santa Ana impacted by COVID nineteen. Please refer any of your youth, I would greatly appreciate it. We're currently halfway there with sixty five enrolled youth, they have been receiving lots of paid work experience. Valuable work experience, workshops, mainly in interview preparation, resume assistance, professional communication, job coaching, etc. We all were young ones, sixteen years old, and we have been assisting them with resume. The goal is for them to find a job and move on and, and have a really good story to tell. After they are done with their work experience. How can the youth apply, we made it very easy, they can apply online. And our website is W W W dot S A youth jobs dot com. Or they can also come in and we can talk to them, review their paperwork, their eligibility requirements. We can talk to them, answer their questions, this is a lot better for us because we can expedite them and get them in a lot quicker. Here at the work center, our address is eight oh one West Civic Center in Santa Ana. For any questions, please call us at our front office at seven one four five six five twenty six hundred. We are also recruiting work sites, so if you have anyone who would like to provide meaningful work experience to our Santa Ana youth. Please contact me or Sandy, Barbara, we would greatly appreciate that. What else do I want to say, I wanna give you a few of our work sites and names of our work sites who are participating in our same program. These include Santa Ana Zoo, the Santa Ana Library, Munch's, Munchy's Vegan Diner, Parks and Rec. Suave Cito in Santa Ana, Fair Housing Council of Orange County, Delhi Center, the Santa Ana Police Department and many more. So thank you so much to our work sites and our youth, that's all I have for you today.
And if I can add, I did a great job, I think we're really excited because we were able to extend this program till December to allow the youth. And to continue to enroll youth to provide those paid work experience. But moving forward and transitioning into fully city funded program. We are looking to simplify the eligibility criteria, which will allow the youth and more youth to continuously apply for the program. We are working very closely with Santa Ana Unified and the C T programs. Met with them yesterday on working together to see how we can connect their youth in their C T path, C T pathway program. And connecting them to employers that we currently have and or working with employers that they already have. And seeing how we can make these youths more successful and guide them in their career pathways.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you both, Sandy and Araceli. Any other staff member comments, anybody else? All right, let's move on to board member comments. Christine Snapper, congratulations on your promotion, this is Christine's last meeting. She's been promoted to a different branch of the Social Services Agency. So thank you so much for your participation and your service and congratulations. I understand you submitted a replacement for yourself, a nomination letter has been. Submitted to appoint Gail Arahu, I think it is.
Yes, Gail is on here with us today.
Oh, good, good. You know, you're trying to look around, well, great, thanks, Gail, for attending today, that's great, we welcome you to the committee. I know we're just waiting on the city council approval or find out finality or whatever, but Christine, we're gonna miss you and congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, everybody, I've learned so much by being on this committee in terms of really helping our cow works families. So I really have appreciated the experience and thank you, Gail is going to step in and also be able to assist. So thank you so very much.
Thank you, I think, I think Gail goes before the October City Council meeting, as I understand it. Any other board member comments, anything anybody wants to share with the board?
I have something.
Dave, oh, go ahead.
Okay, real quick, you know, again, I wanna just mention artificial intelligence, I've been reading a lot about it. And I remember during the presidential election, New York City Mayor Bill de Blasio mentioned that one of the things he wanted to do if he was elected president. Was to establish a department in the, the Labor Department on how to address the displaced workers from artificial intelligence. And oftentimes we think about that when we, we have with labor, where we say when you go to a grocery store, don't use self checkout. However, nowadays, we're seeing stores, Amazon, Whole Foods are gonna be having stores where there'll be no checkout stands at all. You just are automatically billed as you walk out, so there is an upcoming effect on displaced workers. And in the schools, I, I wonder in, are we training young people to, in jobs that may not exist because of artificial intelligence? And just lastly, just a quote from James Baldwin, not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced. So I hope as we go forward, we'll consider the effect of artificial intelligence, you know, throughout, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Dave, I only said your name just because you usually have something to say, so I just was throwing it out.
I, I have nothing to say, I'm, I'm set out.
All right, well, no other comments, we can adjourn, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Dave and Bob, motion on the table, and all those in favor.
Thank you, everybody.
It passes, thank you, everybody, for your time, our next meeting is scheduled for November eighteenth, it should be an in-person meeting. Please mark your calendars.
Have a good day, everybody. Bye bye.